Space needs. Uh, Mr. Underwood, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Black.
Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
All right, and we also have Mr. Forehand, Thomas, Mr. Colley, and Mr. Sealy present. So, everybody's. So, we know we need to look at spaces and what we want to do with schools. I put up a couple of maps, one being of the property that we already own around the schools we have now. Things to sort of give an idea. You wrote in a little bit around the school buildings, David. So. Leon is on here.
No.
So.
I couldn't hear it.
Mr. Sealy, you were at the college, you were both here when the property was bought, is it fifty-five A sixteen?
It is.
And the.
It's up in front.
What about the one sprout down, like the fifty-five something seventy-eight, is that our property?
No.
That's the park, what about that?
Right.
That's all.
That's the walk.
Right, and then that big piece across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little map of that.
The little piece between the road and the middle school. That's ours too.
I think sixteen is ours. Click on the identified.
Sixteen.
Fifty-five A sixteen.
I thought it was ours, just whether we got trail or not, maybe did some work on it. Right, yeah, this side of it, but we, it's all one big piece.
Maybe I do not see a.
Okay.
Oh, it, it's on there, it's hard to find, um, because I found topos uh under some. Yeah. It's on, it topos there somewhere. Leon was here, he could tell you, but I found it on my desk though. Part. So, so it's running. Connected automatically to.
I can do it for public.
Yeah. Probably gonna get us to. I know I found those.
So, we're doing this because of what?
Well, if we're to decide what we're gonna do with schools, we're gonna go with the plan to, I'm thinking of adding the rooms and letting them act. But they showed us at their last presentation and going with that, I'm thinking of possibly looking at a second middle school next to the one that's already there, are we thinking of doing something in one of the other pieces of property or moving totally away from that? We have the sense to stay, sort of keep everybody together. Could fail on gas and travel time and everything else, we have the school so proofed, isn't that why y'all bought all that property to begin with?
They showed them about four hundred and fifty students, one piece of that.
Yeah.
In that plan, we had that up there.
We would, we were, we were supposed to get some data about where the students are now. We ever give them?
What do you mean data about where the students are?
You mean the number of students?
There was supposed to be a dot on the map, the county map that showed where every student was.
Oh, wherever they.
You can pull it from the bus, I think, the Stevens was supposed to get it there.
Oh, from the bus information.
Right.
I don't think I've seen it.
Wouldn't that help us plan better on where another school would be, but. I mean.
That's sort of the center of the county, isn't it? I don't know.
Where would we?
The other place to look at would be to see if there's any land that.
We have a proper siding tentile.
Right.
But it's off of the C C road.
And we got another, didn't, didn't, um, Carmel Church Station? Bellma gave us, Bellma gave us money for land. Carmel Church Station.
But don't we need to get more centralized in that? Because the students, I mean, we've got students everywhere. So you can't, you know, we've got two schools.
Both great schools too.
Correct, yeah, and we've got a breakthrough wall there where you could add six classrooms easily.
Well, that's another thing. The, the plan, the, the, the school presenting plan, they, they basically said add on to every school.
Right.
Right? And then, say Bowling Green to add on. Then, and then in the long term, we look at building a new school. So. My thought is what are, what are the school board priorities? What do they want us to do first?
Well, the question is what can we afford? Because it's not even a question of what we do first, it's what can we afford to get? And that's kind of the issue.
That's, that's a valid point.
And we could, I mean, classroom additions you could plan and, and do them, you know. You could get one contractor and walk through the school additions.
Yeah, one or more, and that's, I think.
Right.
But that's, that's my point is what? What are the school board's priority of the? I guess it's five school addition, new transportation office, and a new school board office, those, those were the things the school board asked for, right?
Did we bottom out on the Lewis and Clark expandability feed? Yeah, I think you can expand based on, uh, site plan, so there's certain distance from those residences.
There is trouble.
That could, I found.
I think I've, I've stopped looking. Terrain and pavings.
But anyway, we believe that you could put additional, now whether you could put, uh, last, uh, you know, mobile classrooms, learning, whatever the right term is, um, it might be a home on issue. Something in some sort of, but, but anyway, I think they can add on, depending on the plan, I think.
So, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Underwood, go right ahead, we're just.
I hope you can hear me. I'll be back today, but, so, we're trying to maintain building space for children. We do it in for, we're looking at pre K twelve programs.
Yeah.
In the building, that's correct.
Yes, sir.
Well.
That's my understanding.
My never went to a church. The funding that we give to, to schools, five living from the state of Mississippi Park, offer K twelve. We have pre K. When you do pre K, that money has to be spent separately, so we know exactly what we're spending for teachers, for the students in a K twelve environment. All of Gov, all of Governor Youngkin's conversation is about K twelve. Right now, we have pre K taking up space, causing an overcrowding in our schools. We have two schools, Madison, excuse me, uh, Bowling Green, Old Elementary, and you have Lewis and Clark where you have students that schools made the decision to use those buildings for other activities. But that is not our, to me, it's not what we told them to do, it's what they decided to do. There is, I don't see anything wrong with reevaluating the use of old Bowling Green Elementary, moving the central office back to the old high school. And we have to build on to the old high school, uh, and do, I think right now, we need to decide where we're going to put students and what makes the most economical sense. Particularly with today's climate and what's going on with education. Funding, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Black?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Um, I'd like to discuss that, I, um, can agree with Mr. Underwood on certain points, um, we, I think we did a short term, medium term, and long term. I mean, the reality behind it is, um, the growth is happening, if you look at, um, where the houses, if we don't improve any other subdivision right now, the mass asset growth is coming along. Pendleton is going to, Pendleton is going to expand rapidly. And so is Ladysmith Village. And so, I mean, when we talk about adding on to, adding on to classrooms, adding on to buildings, the short term thing, fine, I think that's a, that's, that could be a short term fix, but based on population trends and data that's happening, I mean, if Pendleton is the right building, how many thousand homes and place in the village will build like three or four thousand more homes, whatever it is, we're gonna need another school somewhere, something which in the part of county, that goes all the way down to, that goes all the way down to like Carmel Church area. And, um, it seems to me, I don't know, that they were talking about elementary schools, something like that, that would take, if you put one in the Carmel Church area of South of Lake Caroline, sort of new school in the long term, I think that would, uh, that would, you know, take a lot of pressure off the Ladysmith area too, then you could have a zoning law in Caroline, but we need to talk about with a school, what if the short term plan for the next five years, with medium term plan, we all have to come together on the same thing. We're just doing this on our own, it's, it's not really, I think we need to have buy-in from the community as well as buy-in from the school board at three and five two, but it is gonna be a policy of it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. I still need to get an idea as to a timeline, and we could probably do additions faster than we could and design a whole new building and build it. Am I correct in that, or not?
Yeah. Smaller projects, I would, you know, you're designing six classrooms on Bowling Green, you should be able to make it faster than a whole school project, but both are gonna take time.
I also received a letter about, uh, going to Mr. Black, uh, Underwood's comment, uh, the pre K and the overcrowding. And of course, the school has their own rights to do with, with what they've got, but my feeling is if the state gives a set amount of money for pre K, then, you know, they have to apply, they have to be accepted, but that's where it starts. But the letter I got said that so much room's being taken up by three-year-olds that, you know, they're, but kindergarten is getting pushed out and crowded in, and it just seems to me that that should be the, the center point or the, the ones that are actually starting into kindergarten, and we'll limit the pre K to, to what the state allows us. And open up some rooms for, for regular first-year kindergarten kids, because little ones need space, you know, they're not gonna sit in the desks. Teenagers don't like to sit at their desk all day long, but the little ones really can, and they need some room, and, uh, so I, I really felt for the letter about working with such young children and being overcrowded, it's, it's, it's got to be trying for the teachers, the aides. But I'm not making those decisions right now, but as a parent, it, it just seems like you wanna make that first year of school for all the kids a good one, and if they're sitting on top of one another, or out in the hallway, it's not necessarily always the best first year experience. But anyhow, I've wandered away from the subject, how do you all want to go about, do you want to collect areas that we could expand to? Well, I get some numbers.
Well, um, I think the middle school is easy. They just extend the up and down classrooms on that wing, I think the high school is easy and also needed, um.
Mr. Black, while you think, think of that, while you're talking about the middle school, the other suggestion was to build a smaller middle school beside the one that's already there. Since you do construction, is it more feasible to do a new building or to do an add-on?
We don't need a, we don't need to house another thousand middle, we need to house, we need six, seven, eight more classrooms. And they can add on to that wing like they had actually proposed that. I think that would be a, a sensible add-on.
Just like the addition onto the high.
Correct, yeah, both of those seem very reasonable to me and, uh, solve their capacity issues at least for, for a little while. Is Madison expandable as far as land goes? And is that an option?
One of the things you have to look at for, for Madison, and I'd always heard back when we worked on it before, is the core services area of the cafeteria and, and things like that. You can only, you can only expand so much of it, so you have to expand those, so, um, some schools where you might have some room because you can serve the students and you can go up another fifty, hundred, two, whatever, but some, I think they're at capacity there, that's what I remember from ways back, Alan, you remember that saying, don't you, you remember hearing some of that back, you know, when we were dealing with, uh, the, the renovations at Madison, it was that it really wasn't a whole lot of more space you could put there without a whole new cafeteria.
And that's, I mean, that's the smaller of the three, uh, a noteworthy margin, and it's in, it's already in the, in the growth area, and if we have to build a gym and a cafeteria and a dozen classrooms onto that school to get it comparably sized and to accept our, we need the capacity, then I, I would be a proponent of that, I'd like to have a better idea.
You added on to, if there was something, we sell the lands and that is. But they couldn't stand past a certain point.
I never heard that.
Okay.
The only thing I heard back in the day was that it, that the core areas for food service and that type of thing.
Yeah, but, but again, the, the school system made a presentation that, uh, with, with complete plan.
With options.
With options, right, but, but what do we have to do right now, what's the most critical need that we could say, even though we're saying, you know, we may not have money to buy it in cash, we may have to do something else, but what's the first one we have to do? And that's what I'd like to know, because we.
You're, you're out of space in elementary school, all of, and the middle school right there.
Too. No, you're not, no, you're not.
Well, I think, if you move to, uh.
We have enough space for pre K and K.
Yeah, if you move pre K.
Now, for, for, for what we're responsible for, we're, we're funded for K twelve, our, our K twelve buildings have enough space. We don't have enough space for pre K and K, that's what's causing the overcrowding.
Pre K and Head Start.
Elementary buildings. Excuse me.
Mr. Black?
Yes, Mr. Black.
One thing I would like, and I didn't really get out of the school, maybe I'm wrong about this the last being, what their priority as far as, I mean, they gave us four options, but there, there wasn't like, uh, hey, look, this is our option one, this is what we really want, and I, I could be wrong on that, maybe I didn't pay attention and, and, but I didn't feel like they had an option one, option two. The other thing too is for, um, kind of temporary, I don't know, I mean, if you look at the, what they call the Lotus Academy now, I guess, old, um, Ladysmith Elementary, um, I just need to know, like, what is the, what is the condition of that building, I, I know we, we had pumped some money into it years ago for the gym and so forth, but, um, my, I was wondering, if, if it's not, if the bones of that building are, they're really back to state, that we really shouldn't be doing anything with it. However, if the, if the bones were, were, um, in decent shape, I would think you could do like, uh, to save, to save some space, you could do like a kindergarten, first grade, maybe second grade over there. And then Lewis and Park would then be re-proved, that would save a lot of space. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but it's just a suggestion, to kind of make, uh, Lewis Academy kind of where it is primary, and then do the later elementary at that Lewis and Park. That's a possibility for a temporary solution, but I don't wanna sink, if the building's bad. It's a, it's a decent building, that could happen, that would be, because it's a building they already owned, so it wouldn't be a central refurbishment.
I was over there this week for a meeting, and I, it looked a lot better than the last time I was in there, they don't want to make it look like, like a school, uh, it, it looked good, but what's been put into it, I don't know, and so we'll have to talk to them about that, and also about, um, expansion and that type of thing, so, but that is a good point, Mr. Black.
You could also move pre K and Head Start into that building and leave K through twelve in the buildings we're in, since that building is on the way to Lewis and Clark.
From Madison, Lewis and Clark, you really would be foolish, well, be logistically rough to do it from Bowling Green.
No, not from Bowling Green, but for this side of the county, you, for the west side of the county, you could use that for pre K and for Head Start.
And if you did that, then that would make the priority of adding on in Bowling Green the first thing to do.
Correct.
Correct.
See, and.
One thing to keep in mind with Lotus Academy, there's no food and service there, that's, that's all.
Right, but there's a cafeteria and a gym in that building.
But yeah, there is things, but it'd have to be refurbished.
Right.
Um, that's substantial. The, yeah, um, just the space equipment, um, the, the, the other thing, um, you know, I, it, long term, there may be future road improvements on that piece of Ladysmith Road as Pendleton develops out to, you know, thirty-six hundred units. They have an entrance just down the street from there, it's gonna dump a ton of traffic, it's no road, and as, uh, Ladysmith Village through South River comes up there with, there, I'm not talking next year or the year after, but that long term.
But there's still land on the other side of the road that's unimproved, that you could actually take the road.
Right now, I mean, right, you know, who knows with a decade.
Well, no, but I think that's a plan we have to make, is we have to get right away through there so that we've got.
It's not, it's just not a lot of room, that's right on the road, you could lose your parking if they, if they come through there wanting to do anything, so I just, keep in mind, I mean, that's, you know, ten years.
And that's a good point, but we should look at the other side of the road and actually getting right away so that we've got someplace for the, because the longer we wait, more expensive it's gonna get.
The only thing is a bank.
And that's not that close to the road.
See, there's kind of room there at the bank, see, the format drawing, but as you come down further, if they take from both sides of the road.
But you wouldn't take from both sides there, you would take from one side there, and as you go further down, you can actually now.
Well, there's a house there, you end up taking it. Just past the school. But anyway, I, I, that's a future, but it is certainly.
But no, it's something we need to look at.
And that's Horizon, oh my gosh, yeah, you don't wanna take that.
But you could go to the other side, you could bring the road around and come on the other side of that.
They could have a little bit of it, but anyway, I, I just wanted you to think about that, because it, that will be something that'll happen down the road.
Mr. Black?
Yes, Mr. Black.
I, I guess my question is, I, I think that would be definitely a temporary fix for maybe five years, um, but I guess I just need to know from them or from, uh, from our building officials too, is that how, I just don't wanna put back, you know, money into a building that is just so far from gone, and it's, uh, and we can't, I, I, I hope it's not so far gone, I think that would be a solution. Um, but, I mean, I think that's the first question we need to figure out.
And the schools have done a study on it.
So we can request that, um.
And do we know what the result was?
I haven't.
I think we, we did all the documentation provided to us.
We got it.
It's one of the eight hundred page documents.
Uh, Mr. Colley, is it possible to search somehow through records and find out what pieces of property, we do have such as the woman Pendleton, to find out about Madison, and I bet we have other properties.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll put all that together once.
Is the lot the Madison sits on, is that, were you able to find that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, you just said it right before.
Didn't look at. Realized a little further. The curve. Gotta get that right.
Oh, there it is.
Gee, you're busy.
Yeah, just to bring you up to speed, that the Lotus Academy needs, uh, about a nine million, seven hundred and eight thousand in needed maintenance and maintenance and repairs and system replacements, according to the study that was done in rank four in six of the categories. Um, the building is, uh, fifty-seven years old. So it does need Mr. Black significant, um, work, and then if you move on down to do other things to it, uh.
Did you wanna see Madison fly or?
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
It's big.
Well.
Left side. Stormwater retention.
Yeah.
And you can't come, you can't come the other way, because there's cemetery there.
To the right?
Right, yeah.
So going this way forward is a cemetery?
Yes.
You have to go straight to.
Yeah.
And didn't just put a lot of money in the playground area?
Yeah.
Can you just expand out this little bit thing?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the green, I mean, that, all one person. All that's one thing, giant picture going.
We got the voice stick, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Black?
I'm sorry. Mr. Black?
I think the other thing too that we would have to consider, that we wanna talk about, I mean, I heard about expanding Bowling Green, heard expansion of Madison, and then fixing the Lotus Academy. Um, if we did the, those three, what would it be versus say building a, um, new elementary? What would it, it would cost, if you, if you, if you refurbish all three versus building a new elementary?
And if we did a new elementary school, you should be able to buy a piece of land we already have and put.
Correct.
But you still gotta do location, Bowling Green, you can't, you can't move all the, you can't move all the kids from, from all around the county to, to distant places, I mean, Nancy's got Skinkers Neck, I've got all the way down to the Essex Caroline Line, Reggie's got all the way down Route Thirty, you, you gotta keep a school that direction.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, my thinking is, if, if, if the thinking was to, to go with, um, if, if, let's say if we decide, hey, well, we need an elementary school and it's needed, um, you know, a new one, because it's cheaper than doing refurbishment in the free schools, which I don't think that would happen, but if it did, come out, but, like, the Carmel Church area, you can just rezonate. So if you put one down a route one south, somewhere in Mr. Underwood District, or down that area where the, where, you know, you were setting and, and, and meet somewhere in that area, like, you just rezonate, it wouldn't be a big deal, people that are living, go to the school.
But you've got three, you, you'd have three elementary schools in a, in a three, in a two-mile radius.
And not, Carmel Church is not two-mile radius.
Well, it's not that, it's not that far.
It's like six miles.
But I mean, you, all the elementary schools would be on, on, in that corridor. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that, that there's not growth there, but, you know, we still have kids other places.
I think what you have to look at is, if you're gonna place a new school, then it's gotta be placed such that it relieves some. then it's got to be placed such that it relieves some of the students that are going to Bowling Green, and you go the other way to free up seats in Bowling Green from those outer places that you mentioned as part of and that, so I don't know where that would be, but that would be what you have to look at, if the, the school would have to be centrally located enough that it could pull some away from Bowling Green.
If you put something south, south of Route One, like Carmel Church or below Carmel Church, it could pull some of the students from down.
It could pull students.
Which, which would free up, which would free up Bowling Green some, because they all go to Bowling.
I don't know whether Caroline Pines goes to Bowling Green or not, I'm not sure where students show from, but you got to get somewhere where you're.
Yeah, Caroline.
I don't know.
It would free up students from, because it would free up students from Bowling Green or free up students from Lewis and Clark.
Right, let me just say this, when, when we add another building, and here's, we have to be careful, if we add another total expense of a total school. And how do we, I mean, so the cost of the building would be one piece, but the cost of putting all the teachers and administration and everything in there is another whole cost we don't have.
Well, I, I mean, that's going to happen as we expand, and we're going to have to have more teachers.
What's not just teachers, I think if you add teachers to an existing building, still have the same rent fees and systems and that. When you build a whole new building, you, all of your infrastructure as far as cafeteria workers and maintenance cleaning and leadership all increases, so.
But I, I, I think what we were saying is a short-term plan to relieve the issues right now. And the only short-term plan we have is to add on somewhere.
Right.
Figuring out where to add on is a whole other story. But the long-term plan is if all of the development that we have actually materialized is, there will be a need for another school. And this initial plan won't be wasted. Even though, you know, our, our fastest growing county means we got twenty-eight-hundred people in the last four years.
Right, we're not talking twenty-eight thousand.
Right, it's like seven-hundred per year, but eventually that's going to catch up to where we have.
When I was on the school board, and when I left in two thousand, they said by twenty-twenty-five, we'd have seven-to-eight thousand students.
Well.
And we're not, and that's, I mean, we don't know what's going to come down the pipe, development-wise or funding-wise, that, that's our biggest dilemma. And I think, you know, Courtney Rogers is coming tonight, I think, you know, one of the concerns is the cost of all that, and how do we, how do we get there from here?
Well, the other thing is we've approved some fairly large, hopefully, large revenue-producing project. Maybe we need to earmark some of that towards full construction or full expansion.
You can earmark it, but it's got to happen.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Like I said to one of the applicants the last time, we had two pieces of property that were promised us, were going to happen immediately, and that was five years ago, and there's still nothing. So we've been, we've been, we've become the I mean, we've been, we've been the land speculation place for a long time. And, and it, nothing materializes, and so when that doesn't materialize.
True, that's what I'm saying.
I mean.
You can't, you can't earmark it until it's actually here.
Right, and see, it's just like Manamie, it's, it's approved, there's no power, and there's not going to be power for three to five years.
Well, we've already made ninety-thousand dollars a year on that.
Ninety-thousand dollars won't even build an addition.
It'll pay for the uh, the debt service.
Something just got approved, I saw something today from the board, so it proved something else at that.
Okay, I'm just saying that we need something that's substantial revenue, you need
I heard.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, the, the, the increase in the real estate tax we got after rezoning is like ninety-thousand dollars. And that's ninety-thousand dollars we're going to give forever.
Right, but ninety-thousand dollars, I bet won't, that's, what's the debt ser-, what debt service would ninety-thousand dollars pay a million dollars?
Three, two, you go thirty years.
Yeah, but you don't want to do thirty years on a school, you're going to have to, we've got schools that are newer than that, that we need to work on.
Yeah, twenty.
Well, that's a whole other story, is how did we get thirty-three million dollars in deferred maintenance? I mean, I'm not saying whose fault it is, but how did we get there?
Well, that's a long time.
There's no money in this year's budget for maintenance. Fix any of those thirty-three-million-dollar thing.
I think they're knocking some of them off over the years, I mean, a lot of work done on the roofs and things like that.
What's the HVAC project cost, the one at the middle school?
Two hundred, oh, eight million?
Eight million.
Yeah, ten, yeah.
And we get some other things.
So how many things like that are in the deferred maintenance?
Getting back to, if I could, um, as to what we're, how we want to approach this, I think Mr. Black has a good thought, in that most of our growth is going to be on the other side of the county, we may be looking at thinking of two sides of the county each having schools.
I want to be the girl. Remember Ladysmith? High School and Bowling, Bowling Green High School. We're still living there.
Right, exactly.
We're still living there.
But.
Mr.?
Change course just ever so.
Mr. Black, so we have this.
We, we know we need, we know we need the expansion of the middle school and the high school. Can we agree to go ahead and start? Well, that, that's no pre-K discussion, I mean, the numbers are, are pretty telling.
Well, one of the pushbacks I get is we just spent twenty mi-, I mean, I just got chewed on by somebody, we just spent twenty million dollars on the high school to solve the problem. And I got railed on, now we're talking about expanding it. They said, because their biggest complaint is we added almost no classroom space to that building when we rented it. I mean.
That's because the twenty million was going to it. Didn't, by the time the drawings were done and bid out.
See, we're going to have to have something in our hands, because I mean, every time I say, somebody says high school, and then they talk about we just worked on that, the, the next, the next sentence after that was, we finished that in eighteen.
But when did we start? Where at eleven years ago, we started it, we probably I mean, Louisa High School, I was there yesterday. Louisa got a brand-new high school from there. They got a brand-new middle school from there. They're, they're already, they got a two-story expansion going underway right now. No, it's, it's under roof. And it's because they had explosive growth that they didn't. Um, now, they do have a
Money, money helps.
They do have a probably about eight or ten trailers, that they've done a really nice job of making their own little area until that building is done. But I'm just saying that it's Hanover's building three elementary schools, that's forty-four million dollars, Mr. Black, forty-four million dollars for an elementary school. I mean, it, it happens, maybe we didn't expect Pendleton to blow up like it is, and they're still selling, they're still, they're still putting civil in, Ladysmith is doing it, Broadwood's expanding, that's three neighborhoods, they're going to add five to six-hundred homes in the next three years, right there.
I just got.
Mr. Black?
That's another three-hundred dollars.
Yeah, I, I think that we, I was just going to make comments, I heard a comment earlier about the, the expansion versus, um, but I think Mr. Thomas said, well, we add six classrooms, adding six classrooms to one elementary school. You're going to, you're going to have to, I mean, if we, if we're looking at like, hey, adding on to what we've got, you're going to, you're going to have to do it all. I mean, as a, as a, as a short-term fix, if we're going with that before, I mean, with the exception of probably Lewis and Clark, because Lewis and Clark are huge. I mean, that's why we're looking at Lotus. Um, I think you're, that's why I was saying, if you compare, because you're going to have to probably do the high school, middle school, Madison, and Bowling Green. Um, of those schools will be expanded, so then you have to take that versus, maybe you take that versus building a new school somewhere down in the Carmel Church area, elementary school, so, I mean, those are those are your kind of options of what we can do, and Mr. Underwood's idea of moving, like, I mean, or Mr. Seale's idea of moving to start in, you know, pre-K over to the local, and do, it's, it's another, it's another saver, provides us some time. I don't know how much time is being exposed to, I mean, you have to look at those two, I don't think you just say, hey, look at you know, Madison, Madison's classroom.
And keep in mind that anything you do, you know, two to three years out, have it, but it's been off, so the continued pressure, it's, it's going to continue to get worse and worse, so.
Part of it though is if you, if you renovate Madison and build a new school somewhere on Route One, who's going to go to Madison?
That's where the play, that's, my point is you need to move further up two-oh-seven, and you're going to have to get on Carmel Church traffic lots, we all know that. There's warehouses there, and there's probably one other one potentially coming there, so you don't want a school in the midst of all those trucks, even.
Mr. Tom, Mr. Tom, I was thinking as far as if you didn't, if you didn't expansion, I mean, you would look at the expansions for a new school. So if you have a new school down Carmel Church, I would think that would be the same.
Well, well, when we have to solve a problem right now while looking to the future for the problems, or, or trying to be proactive and fix a problem before we get it. So my opinion is we need a new school. Building that new school is in our long-term plan. How do I fix today's issues now? And do I spend money renovating, fixing Madison that then becomes a school that nobody's going to? Because right now Belmont goes to Madison. I don't know who else in that area goes to Madison, which is why I wanted the data for where the kids are, but.
It'd be, right.
Who's going to?
If we have a, a school that's over capacity and a school that's under capacity, it's pretty easy to figure out where we're going to be.
I'm just saying, you're going to ride by Lewis and Clark to go to Madison. Somebody.
We have people that are in Woodford, Campbell's Creek and all point north, they all go to Lewis and Clark, right?
Would they, would they go to Madison?
There's no reason they couldn't.
So they'd ride, they'd ride by Lewis and Clark to go to Madison?
They'd take a left, a center, or right.
Then I think the other thing we have to figure out is is which is the most logical for construction? How much additions as far as new builds, but I'm not committed to that, as to the time factor that will be involved. Would be plan, how much faster would it be to do additions than to do new builds?
Be faster, because classrooms are simple compared to, and there's less construction, if there's no bathrooms, no kitchens, no, no things.
Chews, no enough, right.
You're talking about classroom space, that's
I wouldn't necessarily prove how bad you might have.
You may. But, kitchen. At the middle school, we're looking at one, one classroom deep, I can't imagine adding four classrooms, two up, two down, would require more bathrooms.
So that would be a possibility, we'd need to do that for now, since you're talking a couple of years, as we plan and decide what to do for new schools, which will be four to six years, is what we're thinking. But you got to have something in the meantime.
But I think again, we need their priority of what they think is most important. So I don't know where the kids are, I don't know which one they think is most critical. What school do I have on first? And then you plan for the rest of them and three things. If that's what I have to do, whether, I mean, can I afford it? Pretty sure I could probably do one right then.
Where did you go?
Mr. Underwood? We're going to be wrapping up fairly soon, because we've got to go to um a regular meeting, but um, comments?
Oh, uh, excuse me, I'm just, oh, my comment still made already.
Oh, I understood, you feel better.
Thank you.
Mr. Black?
No, I just think we have to, um, I think we have some common ground here, and I'm hopeful it's a good thing, I think what we need to do is we are growing, we have a positive community, we, I think all of us, all of us do care of the kids, doing the studying, whatever it is. It's not, so I think we need to keep on working, making the conversation, come up with a concrete plan if we can bring, use it, pretty quickly. Thank you.
I mean, but let's just remember that a new school, tax-wise, what that's going to mean, what, what that's going to mean for a tax rate, because forty-four million dollars is going to be a hefty and that doesn't put any people in. So that would be, there would be an additional bill to that, I'm just saying, we have, we have to look at what that cost is because it's not just the building, it's everything that goes in when we do that.
We have to get back to students too.
As far as boys go, yes, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But the school, we were to build a school, it would be an elementary school, correct? That still doesn't solve the middle school or high school problems.
Right, right, we still have to do additions.
All right, there's something we can do, we can say go right now to something.
Right.
And then still solve our elementary issue.
Yeah, because that's our, that's the long-term plan, is that a new school will solve the elementary.
But I'd like to see some plans this time before we say, because we didn't have anything when we did the high school. We had a number, and that was it, and that didn't solve our, our bigger problems. I mean, we didn't touch most of the bathrooms.
And we're going to get.
Or subject to move.
Well, I'm just saying.
If it's the bathroom, get the whole bowl in there in three hours.
Right, but, but you know what I'm saying, is we said we were going to at the end of the day, we, we need to know.
Were you guys?
We need to know what we're sign, what, what's going to happen, we're going to have to see something, because folks are going to have to understand what this means and what we're doing.
And I would have my group, this is a sort of building. Definitely involved. Inspection and so forth.
Well, you have to have a comment for everybody else.
Yeah, see?
My mind is, I, I agree that the long-term plan is to build a new school, but also get, tell the school board what their priority is for the addition, so we can see if we can take a bike first and and start one a lot sooner than life. And I'd also like the student data, okay?
Because all buses have their little quarters.
Yeah, we didn't lose nobody, we picked up.
It's now, sir.
All right, Mr. Forehead, you have any closing comments?
If I're an architect tonight.
No, you got to go out there.
Start the process, start the process. Long as it's not masking.
Actually, actually, we have the public-private partnership, so if there was an architect who came and gave us the proposal, we would have to entertain.
I'm not even going there.
We can do that.
I'm not even going there, because I watched what happened in one other project, and
Here?
I, I'll, oh, yeah, I'll talk to you about it.
No, we saved a lot of money on the way for a treatment plan, with public-private property.
Well.
Fifteen million dollars.
Alrighty, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Black and Mr. Underwood.
I'll be back in a minute.
We'll be back in a few minutes. And um, I'll try and respect you all.